Good evening, everyone. This is the October 3rd, 2018, meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We are going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and you're all invited to join in.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number 1, 2012-04, Storybook Homes, Wisconsin; number 2, 2012-02, Carlson Associates, Kings Park; number 3, 2010-06, KVC Holdings; under waiver request 4, number 773 Scholar States and Comac; under 288 application, Lisetta Street; and under final subdivision, number 6, 1136 Map of Oak Meadow and Fort Solongo.
Is there anybody present who wants to be heard on any of the matters regarding which the Planning Department is requesting be recessed? Seeing none, a motion, please.
I move that we recess items 1 through 6 as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so recessed.
Okay, the first item under new hearings and decisions is a waiver request for number 1096 Maloney Estates in Smithtown. The applicant requests the Planning Board to waive the requirement of street trees and sidewalks within the subdivision known as number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates. Subdivision number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on April 18th, 2012. The applicant responded for 520 feet of sidewalk and 15 street trees along Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court. The applicant submitted an application to waive all the street trees and sidewalks on July 16th, 2018. The applicant states that the homeowners do not want the sidewalks constructed or the street trees planted. The applicant also submitted signatures of the homeowners on Maria Court in support of the waiver request. The Highway Department has reviewed the waiver request and has no objection to the applicant's request. Engineering Department has no objection to waiving the sidewalks but defers to the Planning Department for the waiver of street trees. The Planning Department has no objection to the sidewalk waiver for the following reasons: One, Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court are residential access streets and have been identified by the Planning Department as street trees that do not need sidewalks due to the low traffic volume. Two, there are no sidewalks on the north side of Lincoln Avenue. The Planning Department objects to the street tree waiver for the following reasons: One, the Planning Department performed an onsite inspection of Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court on July 24th, 2018, and determined there is sufficient space to plant street trees within right-of-ways of both streets. Two, street trees are standard public improvement in all subdivisions as they improve the character of the neighborhood and are generally beneficial to the community. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, waiver request of public improvements for number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of John Maloney to waive 520 feet of sidewalk and 15 street trees on Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court within subdivision number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates, now therefore be it first resolve that the Planning Board hereby approves the request by John Maloney to waive 520 feet of sidewalk within subdivision number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates for the following reasons: One, Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court are residential access streets and have been identified by the Planning Department as streets that do not need sidewalks due to the low traffic volume. Two, there are no sidewalks on the north side of Lincoln Avenue. Second resolve that the Planning Board hereby denies the request of John Maloney to waive 15 street trees within the subdivision 1096 Map of Maloney Estates for the following reasons: One, the Planning Department performed an onsite inspection of Lincoln Avenue and Maria Court on July 24th, 2018, and determined there is sufficient space to plant street trees within the right-of-ways of both streets. Two, street trees are standard public improvement in all subdivisions as they improve the character of the neighborhood and are generally beneficial to the community.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. I am submitting the affidavit of posting. Matt Colado, might as well hand up the two others.
Thank you.
I've heard the recommendation of the Planning Department and the, I think it was Mr. Colado that went out and looked at the site, and anyway, I guess half a loaf is better than none, so.
That is true.
So far, anyway. So, we would ask the Board to approve the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Okay. Anybody in the audience who wish to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any member of the Board? Seeing none, I think just for clarification purposes, let's do a motion for the first, for the approval, and then a second motion for the denial, so that it's clear.
In the matter of number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
In the matter of number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
With respect to the-
With respect to the first resolve, with the respect to the sidewalks.
Are we splitting this resolution into two, or?
Well, I was gonna make it clear, we could do it in one.
I think it would be appropriate to do it in its entirety as if we so drafted.
I think the clarification is better.
Yeah, I, that's why I did it that way.
Just to keep the record clean.
Exactly, to keep the record, so we know, so everybody knows what we're approving and what we're denying. That's why I suggested that.
And in the matter of-
Well, we're gonna vote on the first part of the resolution. You just made a motion to, for us to approve the first resolve with respect to the approving the sidewalk waiver. So on that part of the resolution, I have, I am seconding it, and, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none. That part of the resolution is adopted. Now, a second, separate motion regarding the second resolve with respect to the denial of the street tree waiver.
In the matter of number 1096 Map of Maloney Estates, regarding the denial of the street tree waiver, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none, so adopted. Thank you.
The next item is a waiver request for 911A Map of Glenhill Northern in St. James. The applicant requests to waive condition N of the final approval for the subdivision known as number 911A Map of Glenhill Northern. The final subdivision, number 911A Map of Glenhill Northern, received conditional final approval from the Planning Board on May 21st, 1997. This was a two-lot subdivision in the R-21 zoning district fronting Northern Boulevard in St. James. Lot 1 is approximately 154 feet of frontage and is 1.6 acres in size. Lot 2 has approximately 100 feet of frontage and is 0.5 acres in size. Condition N reads as follows: "N, covenants and restrictions on a form acceptable to the town attorney shall be filed with the deed of lot number 1 prohibiting future subdivision for new residences unless the lots meet the frontage and area requirements for this R-21 zoning district. And the one-half-story frame barn shall not be used for business or residential occupancy, and no principal or accessory structure shall be permitted in the 56-feet-by-100-foot panhandle." In 2007, a waiver request was submitted to the Planning Board in order to waive part of condition N to allow lot 1 to be divided into two lots with 77 feet of frontage each. The minimum lot frontage requirement in the R-21 zoning district is 100 feet. The proposal complies with the minimum lot area requirements for the R-21 zoning district. For clarity, this memorandum refers to the lots in the original subdivision as lots 1 and 2, and the lots in the potential subdivision as lots 1B and 2B. As part of the waiver request, the applicant submitted a yield plan that demonstrates that lot 1 could be subdivided into two lots that fully conform to the zoning and subdivision regulations. However, it was his opinion that two 77-foot-wide lots would be more in character with the neighborhood. Between the years 2007 and 2010, the Planning Board held three hearings regarding this waiver application on January 16th, 2008, December 1st, 2010, and December 15th, 2010. After reviewing the minutes of the three meetings and correspondence in the file, it appears the Planning Department had no objection to waiving the part of condition N that required the applicant comply with the frontage requirements of the R-21 zoning district. The Planning Department's opinion was based on the fact that the zoning district on the west side of Northern Boulevard is R-10, which requires a minimum frontage of 75 feet, and the typical frontage of the lots on the west side of the street is 75 feet. Therefore, the applicant's proposal would be in character with those lots. However, the Planning Department objected to the house on lot 1B being set back approximately 284 feet from the street. At that time, the Planning Department recommended that both houses be set back 50 feet in order to match the character of the east side of Northern Boulevard. The Planning Department also noted that setting the house far back from the road raised issues with emergency vehicle access and privacy concerns for surrounding neighbors. The applicant objected to the house being set back 50 feet from Northern Boulevard, and there has been no movement on the application since 2011. In June of 2018, the applicant met with the Planning Department to ask the Planning Department reconsider the applicant's proposal. After reconsidering this request, it appears that, that the Department's original objections were not germane to the waiver request but rather should be evaluated when the applicant submits a proposal to subdivide lot 1. Any waiver approval that places such specific conditions, i.e. specifying building locations on a future land division, could be seen as a preapproval of that subdivision. For the above reasons, the Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board modify condition N as follows: "N, covenants and restrictions on a form acceptable to the town attorney shall be filed with the deed of lot number 1 prohibiting future subdivision for new residences unless the lots meet the frontage requirement for the R-10 zoning district and area requirements for the R-21 zoning district. And the one-and-a-half-story frame barn shall not be used for business or residential occupancy, and no principal or accessory structure shall be permitted in the 56-foot-by-100-foot panhandle." The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, modification of conditional final approval for 911A Map of Glenhill Northern. Whereas the Planning Department has considered the request of Arthur Heinrich to modify condition N, a final approval within the subdivision known as 911A Map of Glenhill Northern in order to allow a subdivision of lot 1 where the lot frontages do not meet the R-21 zoning district requirement, now therefore be it first resolve that the Planning Board hereby modifies condition N a final approval within the subdivision known as 911A Map of Glenhill Northern as follows: "N, covenants and restrictions on a form acceptable to the town attorney shall be filed with the deed of lot number 1 prohibiting future subdivision for new residences unless the lots meet the frontage requirement for the R-10 zoning district and the area requirements for the R-21 zoning district. And the one-and-a-half-story frame barn shall not be used for business or residential occupancy, and no principal or accessory structure shall be permitted in the 56-foot-by-100-foot And we have the affidavit of posting.
Thank you.
Vincent J. Tramarko, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. To the applicant, I've heard the recommendation of the Planning Department. I believe this was all done the last time, too, and we have no objection. Ask the Board to favorably approve the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Okay. Anybody present who wishes to be heard on this matter? Seeing none, motion to close the hearing, please.
In the matter of number 911A Map of Glenhill Northern, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? So closed, and now on the resolution, please.
In the matter of number 911A Map of Glenhill Northern, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none?
The next item is an extension of conditional preliminary approval for number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens in St. James. The applicant requests to extend the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens. The subdivision number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens received conditional preliminary approval from the Planning Board on January 31st, 2018. The approval was valid for a six-month period that expired on July 31st, 2018. The applicant submitted a request for an extension on September 21st, 2018, with the attached letters dated September 21st, 2018 and September 24th, 2018. Pursuant to Section 248-10 of the subdivision regulations, Planning Board approval of preliminary layout submission shall expire six months after the date of such formal action. No Planning Board action will be taken after such expiration until a new application and filing fee are submitted. If a request for an extension of preliminary approval is submitted before the six-month period, a fee of $275 shall be submitted. A waiver for a reasonable period of time may be given in cases of hardship upon petition to the Planning Board. Based on the applicant's letters submitted to the Planning Board, the Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board grant a waiver of the six-month timeframe within which an extension request may be submitted for two additional months and grant a six-month retroactive extension due to the difficulty the surveyor has had in researching and locating the proper center lines along Hobson Avenue. This research is in relation to condition A of preliminary approval that reads: A, the Hobson Avenue right-of-way shall be widened so that the property line is 25 feet from the center line of Hobson Avenue. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, extension of preliminary approval for number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request to waive the six-month timeframe within which an extension request may be submitted and extend the conditional preliminary approval for number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, now therefore be it first resolve that the Planning Board hereby waives the six-month timeframe within which an extension request may be submitted for two additional months, and second resolve that the Planning Board hereby grants a retroactive six-month extension of time to the conditional preliminary approval for the subdivision known as number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens to expire on January And we have the affidavit of posting.
Yes, thank you. Vincent J. Tramarko, 1038 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. Obviously, we go along with the recommendation of the Planning Department. We asked the Board for its favorable consideration. It was kind of a tough thing because some areas in St. James have different lot lines, and they overlap, and the surveyor was having a devil of a time trying to figure out where the lines were. So we asked the Board for this extension. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any questions from any member of the Board on this matter? Seeing none, first a motion to close the public hearing, please.
In the matter of number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? So closed. I think this one we can do with just one motion.
In the matter of number 1168 Map of Hobson Gardens, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? I think you should just read it first, and then get to that. I'll read your letter in.
The next item is a preliminary subdivision, number 1182 Map of Roseville Park in St. James. The applicant requests preliminary approval to subdivide a 2.49-acre parcel into four single-family residential lots. The preliminary subdivision known as number 1182 Map of Roseville Park, 1904, is comprised of one tax lot that fronts Lake Avenue, Roseville Avenue, and Ann Marie Drive in St. James. The parcel is 2.49 acres and is located in the R-21 zoning district. The site is surrounded by R-21 zoning and single-family dwellings. There is a single-family dwelling on lot 2 that will remain. This lot fronts both Lake Avenue and Roseville Avenue. The subdivision proposes one additional dwelling fronting Lake Avenue and two additional dwellings fronting Roseville Avenue. Lot 4 also fronts Ann Marie Drive. Topography of the site is flat and located approximately 135 feet above sea level. The site does not contain any high groundwater or natural surface water features. All of the lots conform to the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Engineering Department has reviewed the preliminary application and found it acceptable. It recommends the following as conditions of approval: One, an erosion settlement control plan must be filed with the final plat application. Two, a concrete survey monument should be installed on the southwest corner of lot 4. It appears that the second condition is premature to impose at the time of preliminary layout approval. However, if this subdivision is approved, the monument should be included as a public improvement. The Highway Department has received the preliminary application, has reviewed the preliminary application, and offers the following comments: One, concrete curbs are required on Lake Avenue as directed by the Highway Department. Two, the two-by-two-foot catch basin on Lake Avenue needs to be updated to a type 1 catch basin and moved out of the radius of Lake Avenue. The basin should be connected to the existing pool under the handicap ramp and to additional pool in the right-of-way as directed by the Highway Department. Three, the ramp at the corner of Lake Avenue and Roseville Avenue should be updated to ADA compliant ramp. The Traffic Safety Department has reviewed the preliminary application and has found it acceptable. The Department of Environment and Waterways has found the tree preservation and land clearing plan acceptable and recommends issuing a secret negative declaration. The Department of Environment and Waterways also recommends conditions regarding the clearing of land and site preparation before construction that will be addressed during final plat approval. The Planning Department has reviewed the preliminary application and finds it acceptable and offers the following comment: One, when it approved the subdivision to the north of this property, Map of Ann Marie Park, the Planning Board intended Ann Marie Drive to eventually be extended through the subject property to connect to Roseville Avenue. Proposed layout does not include extending Ann Marie Drive. However, it appears this layout is more in keeping with the character of the neighborhood than if the street was extended. The Department of Environment and Waterways offers the following resolution pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, recommended secret declaration for number 1182 Map of Roseville Park, 1904. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the secret recommendation from the Department of Environment and Waterways and indicated that any potential adverse environmental impacts associated with said project do not rise to the level of significance which would require the preparation of an environmental impact statement. Now therefore be it first resolve that the Planning Board hereby issues a secret and negative declaration, determination of nonsignificance, and EIS is not necessary. In the matter of the application for subdivision approval, trust under will of Lattice D. Custer Care Roger Budd for number 1182 Map of Roseville Park, 1904, for the following reasons: A, the proposal does not appear to significantly threaten any unique or highly valuable environmental or cultural resources as identified in or regulated by the Environmental Conservation Law of the State of New York or Smithtown Town Code. B, the parcel does not appear to suffer any severe environmental development constraints, no poor soil properties, no high groundwater, and no unmanageable slopes. C, the small size and nature of the proposal mitigate against any, against a significant adverse impact upon the environment. D, the proposal appears to be consistent with the planned use of the parcel incompatible with neighboring land uses. E, the project as proposed on the tree preservation and land clearing plan prepared by Michael James Hillebrand, licensed land surveyor, and dated September 19th, 2017, provides for the retention of a significant amount of existing trees and natural vegetation upon development of the subject parcel. Such preservation shall be ensured by the placement of snow fencing or orange mesh construction fencing along all limits of clearing and around any individual trees to be preserved within clearing areas. This shall be done to the satisfaction of the Environmental Protection Director, and said fencing shall be maintained and placed by the applicant until the completion of all land clearing and grading activities at the subject parcel. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the Board's consideration: Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2018, subdivision preliminary approval for number 1182 Map of Roseville Park. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request for preliminary approval by trust under will of Lattice D. Custer Care Roger Budd to subdivide 2.49 acres into four lots, now therefore be it first resolve that the Planning Board hereby approves the preliminary subdivision, number 1182 Map of Roseville Park, subject to the following conditions: An erosion settlement control plan must be filed with the final plat application. Two, the final map shall reflect the following: A, concrete curbs to be installed on Lake Avenue as directed by the Highway Department. B, the two-foot-by-two-foot catch basin on Lake Avenue to be updated to a type 1 catch basin and moved out of the radius to Lake Avenue. The basin should be connected to the existing pool under the handicap ramp and to additional pool in the right-of-way as directed by the Highway Department. C, the ramp at the corner of Lake Avenue and Roseville Avenue should be an ADA compliant ramp. Second resolve that the preliminary approval shall be valid for a six-month period to expire on April 3rd, 2019.
Okay, before we have any, anything further on this, Counsel, you could give your appearance first, and then I'm gonna read the letter into the record.
Very good. For the applicant, Terrence Quinn, Real 5 East Mays Street, Smithtown, New York, 11787.
Thank you very much. At this moment, I'd like to read into the record a letter that was sent today to the Planning Department on the letterhead of San Ward, Coshagnano, PLC, 333 Earl Ovington Boulevard, Suite 601, Uniondale, New York, 11553, regarding preliminary subdivision application 1182 Map of Roseville Park. Dear Chairman Earhardt and members of the Board, Our firm represents Dr. Lawrence and Nicole Northern, the owner of property located at 16 Ann Marie Drive, St. James, New York. My client's property abuts the property that is the subject of this application on the Northerly property line. Therefore, my clients are directly impacted by this proposed subdivision. My office was only recently retained in this matter, and I have a previous engagement that precludes me from attending this evening. In addition, we have not had a full opportunity to review the town's file. We would like to examine the file before proceeding with this hearing so that my clients can be, can fully understand all of the impacts and propos, impacts the proposed development will have on their property. Therefore, we respectfully request a short adjournment of the hearing. If the Board is not inclined to adjourn this matter for, to another date, I would note that one of my client's major objectives would be the removal of trees from the subject property adjacent to their property. They want to ensure that the developer includes an appropriate planted buffer since their house faces the backyards of the proposed dwelling. My clients noted that the two-lot subdivision on Esther Drive resulted in the removal of nearly every mature tree on those lots, and they are concerned that this development will have the same result, and they will be forced to stare into the backyard of the new homes. We hope that the Board will grant our request for the short adjournment. Thank you in advance for your courtesies in this matter. Very truly yours, John C. Farrell. I asked, when I became aware of this letter this afternoon, I asked Mr. Colado of the Planning Department to contact Mr. Farrell and find out what he meant by a short adjournment, and whether he would be able to work with the very next meeting that we have scheduled for October 17th. I'm advised by Mr. Colado that Mr. Farrell, Mr. Farrell indicated that he would be able to get whatever he needs to get done by the October 17th meeting. So with that being said, I'm gonna just ask that any comments be limited to the issue of whether or not the hearing be, should be adjourned, because we have a request by two interested parties by counsel who cannot be here and who is asking simply for a two-week adjournment to give him an opportunity to review the file and come and make his presentation on the issues that his clients want addressed. I mean, you can say whatever you want, but I'm just asking-
No, I'll address, I'll address that.
Okay.
Mr. Shay, at this time, we're not inclined to consent to that adjournment. My client has no money, he's paying me to show up here. That was, obviously, you noticed the second time it was on, there was significant input from the Northerns the last time this was on, okay? And there was a vote taken on that, and we know the results of that vote. So we're back here again, and we're not, we're not inclined to consent to that. The other part of it is, the Northerns are worried about the trees.
By the way, I didn't think you would consent.
I mean-
You have your job to do, I understand, no problem.
We, we reviewed this, and I'm more than willing to sit with the Northerns again. Now they're representative of our council, so obviously I wouldn't do that, but the trees that they stare out at their house are not coming out. They're on that tree preservation and land plan, and those trees are staying. And that was approved by Environmental and Waterways. The director of Environmental Waterways is gonna monitor those trees, whether they come out or they're destroyed by construction. They are not coming out. So, you know, again, I did have that plan, I did go over that with them, and, you know, obviously, they're laypeople, and maybe it was, it was something they didn't understand, but that is, I think, not an issue. And I think the Board would agree with me if they reviewed that tree preservation plan, that those trees, especially for the Northerns, are not an issue. I mean, there are other trees coming out in the front, but there are absolutely no trees coming out that the Northerns look at. None.
Two tree plants. Do you have the affidavit of posting?
Yes, I do. This is in the far rear of that property, right? I mean, the-
It's lot 4 in the far rear, and it backs up to Ann Marie lot. But they would have extended Ann Marie Court, they would have, it would have been worked-
It would have been cleared anyway.
Yeah, it would have been cleared anyway, right?
Right. And that's, you know, that's-
So we're keeping Ann Marie Court the way it is?
Right.
And then you're putting one here, one here, and one there.
And I believe Mr. Shay's, last time we were here, asked if we'd be agreeable to not do anything with that property, whatever language you wanna use. And we're more than happy to not front on Ann Marie. Whatever restrictions you wanna put, or somebody wants to put on, coming in from Ann Marie, which would necessitate taking down some trees, I guess, if we did that, we're more than willing to agree to that, to not do that. So, again, you know, with all due respect to the Northerns, and I know they want their day, and so does their lawyer, that issue is not an issue, as far as we're concerned.
Well, they have raised those issues in this letter. Whether there are others or, or not, I don't know. What they understand from when you spoke to them, which was nice of you, I don't know. But I think if you would be willing to do it, since they now have counsel representing them, to contact counsel and perhaps speak to counsel, and maybe they will withdraw their, you know, what appear to be objections to this between now and the next meeting if it gets adjourned. And if it could all be worked out, then it would be easier for everybody. If you don't wanna pursue that route, obviously, that's- If you don't wanna pursue that route, obviously, that's up to you.
I'm more than willing, always, Mr. Chairman, to talk to other attorneys about resolving that. But I've talked to Mr. Farrell, I couldn't even get him to remove those clients, to remove abreviations out of all my clients' property, when he acknowledged they're all my property, all my clients' property. And we couldn't even get him to review, remove them, which is not an issue for the Board , obviously, but.
Well, I can't really speak for Mr. Farrell, I wasn't part of that conversation, and he's not here.
Yeah. Well, they're still, they're still there, and they're on the map, so.
I understand.
They have been ruled. So, again, that's a different issue. I apologize for bringing that up, but.
I understand.
I, I don't, you know, again, we oppose the adjournment.
Okay.
Obviously, it's the Board's discretion to do what they feel is best.
Correct. And given you the opportunity to, to speak, and you've given us your position. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to be heard on this matter?
I, I'm Nicole, it's actually Highlights, are we being heard?
Well, you're, you're represented by counsel, ma'am. You can come up, but your attorney probably wouldn't want you to. And if I was your attorney, I wouldn't want you to. Because you've, you've hired counsel, and he should really speak for you. I mean, you can if you want to, but it, it's up to you.
Okay.
Okay. We have, you know, a letter of representation from counsel. So anything that you would wanna say tonight, say it to your attorney, and let your attorney address it from there.
It's Northorn, by the way. Thank you.
Okay. And, and for the record, that was Nicole Northorn, one of the two people who retained Mr. Farrell's law firm. So with that being said, in my opinion, and I don't know how everybody else feels about this, because I haven't discussed it with any of them, there are two residents who are owners of adjoining property who have an interest in this application and who have retained counsel apparently very recently. And the counsel sent in a letter dated today asking for a brief adjournment. Counsel through Mr. Colado has indicated he could work with a two-week adjournment to our, only to our next meeting. So with that being said, I would move to recess this matter to the October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of this Board, just simply to give Mr. Farrell the opportunity to do what he says he wants to do as far as examining the town file and giving him an opportunity to be heard, much like we would give anybody else an opportunity to be heard. So with that being said, I move that we recess this matter to the October seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of this Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So recessed.
There's no more objections, the Chairman, thank you.
No problem. Yeah, maybe they could sit down and work it out.
Right.
It's only, that's why, that's why, right. It's only fair to let him be heard. Doesn't mean he's gonna get his way, but. Right, right. And maybe these two attorneys will sit down, and the whole thing will be resolved. And, you know, he's willing to only go to the next meeting, not saying move it to December. Oh, he has the other one? Get it back? Okay. All right, so the, next is the, on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes.
I move that we adopt the minutes of September twelfth, two thousand eighteen, meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So adopted. And next would be the motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? We're adjourned. Thank you all.